Turn it over to Kim.
Okay, will we turn it over to you?
We're turning it over to Kim.
Do you guys want to see? Yeah, so.
Good idea. Who's bringing the cookies?
Over to our... Kim Conger will start the presentation.
Should I bring your cookies?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. So this evening, we are going to be presenting basically overarching activities that happen in our elementary, middle school, and high school on mental health. What I think you're going to take away from the presentation is that a child's mental health is not a reactive state. It's something that we have to be proactive about. So everything you're going to hear about tonight is going to be about the proactive activities that happen in all of our schools at all the levels. And I'm happy to introduce Dr. Danielle Smith, Dr. Allison Brush, Mrs. Alyssa Cremeni, three of our psychologists. Not everyone is presenting tonight. And Dr. Smith has brought with her the J Mac organization from the high school that is also going to be presented. So no further ado, I'll turn it over to her. Thank you.
So for right now, I'm going to conduct the in-depth breath. Now, this is a practice we do and promote at J Mac. And so let's begin by finding a comfortable position. Perhaps shaking your body to find that relaxed, yet alert posture. If it feels comfortable, allowing your eyes to close. However, if you wish to keep your eyes open, maybe drop your... front of you, remembering that at any... we'll be taking a relaxing breath up through the mouth. Let's try that for three breaths, remembering that we're not breathing in any special way. So breath one. Breath two. And then breath three. And now you can open your eyes and feel any of the body sensations or feelings. And I want to ask you how you're feeling right now, adjectives or anything that you're feeling.
More calm.
Your voice is very calm.
Oh, that's just that.
We might want to record it.
I'm going to take you home.
So the reason we do this practice is that it slows our heart rate and it connects us to something other than our thoughts and our minds. And it's a pretty healthy practice to like prevent continuous focus on your emotions. And it allows us to drop out of the fight or flight mode or the sympathetic nervous system and into the relaxation state of our central nervous system, which is the parasympathetic nervous system. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alyssa Cremeni. I'm a psychologist at the Rhode Island School. But I will be presenting for elementary buildings because we have the same major themes and initiatives in all buildings. I think I click her. Okay, I'm going to start with the building initiatives that are in all the buildings. So staff development, that's done by the building psychologists, by our Northwell Health Initiative that we have with them, and also by Bozies. Peaceful breathing, we just got a little sample of that before. We do do that in our elementary buildings as well, whether it's in the morning with an announcement or during the day in the classrooms or after recess, we all take those big, deep, peaceful breaths. The Start With Hello program, that is in September, every September. The focus is on increasing connection and ending... Picture actually up there is from one of our Start With Hello assemblies. I think you can see there's a hand on that poster and that kind of symbolizes reaching out and connecting with everybody else. All the elementary buildings have themes and these promote character education to help in the development of good values and virtues in order to make good, healthy, everyday decisions. P.S. I Love You Day, it's not a Valentine's Day celebration, but it is celebrated in February, every February. And it's a day to educate students that mental health is just as important as physical health. Spirit Days, that's always fun in the elementary buildings. If you had children in elementary school, you remember those. We use them to include themes of kindness and inclusion such as Random Acts of Kindness Day and Positive Post a Day. And we could actually thank Dr. Sherman for bringing that wonderful program into all of our elementary buildings. There is so much, I could spend the whole time talking about that because there is so much in this program, but I'm just going to highlight the most important themes and parts of it. So here are some of the components. The morning meeting, that is a positive way to start each day. It's about 20 minutes where the students sit together in a circle. Everyone greets each other. The students engage in some kind of share while other students make connections to it. Then there is also some type of group activity or game. And then there is the morning message that's presented. And this message to the class saying what the learning skills and the goals of the day are going to be. The class itself helps to create the rules. Energizers are used throughout the day to get everybody ready for learning. There's quiet time set aside as cool down period after lunch and recess, for example. And at the end of the day, there's a closing circle to share, reflect, and celebrate the day's accomplishments. I'm actually going to show you a little example of a quick share during a morning meeting, just to set it up for you. This is a co-teaching second grade class. And if you'll notice in the video, you can see the morning message in the background. And then there is a student, he may be a little hard to understand, I hope that you can hear him, but he's actually sharing something he likes. And the academic piece of it is actually in front of him because this little conversation starts to help him organize his thoughts. So it is like first, next, last, and in conclusion. So as he's sharing, he's also organizing his thoughts. You'll also notice that the students are doing these little hand movements. They're not being silly. They're actually showing a brain connection to what he's saying. And some of the hand movements are actually like they're saying wow to him. So they're not just being silly, there's like a reason for those hand movements. And then you'll see at the end, one of the teachers explains how we're all making a connection with the student while the other teacher is talking about the academic piece of it. I love how you organize your thoughts and use all those words all together to make sense of what you're saying. So let's hope this works.
I like to open Pokemon packs. To begin, I like opening it because it's a secret, you don't know what you can get. Next, I like to open Pokemon packs because it's really fun and it uses certain types of ways and it's really fun. Additionally, I like to open Pokemon packs because it's really fun and satisfying with the sounds that we hear in it. For some love, I like to open a Pokemon pack.
I noticed we have a lot of Pokemon packs in here.
And I noticed that you use very different transition words than I thought would make your retelling excellent.
You're making connections with me too, by the way. You're making connections with me. But you can see how the social emotional is really intertwined with the academic piece. This brings us to our classroom-specific and SEL classroom support. Connected and respected bucket filling, Go Noodle, Brain Breaks. These are things that classroom teachers use every day in a classroom. Elementary teachers really infuse SEL into everything that they do. It's like that poem, "Everything I Learned, I Learned in Kindergarten," or "Everything They Need to Know, They Did Really Learn in Elementary School." That's what's happening really all day long. Friendship Groups, that's a pull-out social skills program that we use. Erin's Law Presentations, the focus of the lessons are on personal body safety, online safety, and connecting with trusted adults. The lessons are conducted by the building psychologists at the elementary level in second grade and fourth grade classrooms. Zones of Regulation is an SEL curriculum used to foster self-regulation. That's what that little poster is. I don't know if you can see everything clearly, but blue would be the sad, tired, kind of low-energy feeling. The yellow is they're feeling a little silly. The green, that is the best time of learning. They feel calm, they feel connected, they feel safe. That's the goal, is to get to green. And the red is a kind of really angry feelings. And then we teach them skills to get back to the green. So that's the zones of regulation. Minds Up and Mindful Life are some of the mindfulness programs that we use. The bully prevention lessons we do mostly in the upper grades. We teach the students what is a bully, what is bullying behavior, what is an upstander, what is a bystander, and how do you get help for either yourself or someone else that may need it. Second Step, this is our newest program. Thank you, Mrs. Conger, for helping us to get that version. Thank you. And I'm actually going to show you, just to end it, a little video of a classroom presentation. It is from one of our first grade lessons. And the students are learning when they get really overwhelming feelings, how to just take that big, deep breath and calm down. So you'll see a little song that is from the Second Step program, the movements we've kind of just made up together. He's so cute. I'm going to turn it over to middle school now to hear about some of their programs. Oh, yes.
I couldn't see what the morning message said, but it sounded interesting because it was a combination of the SEL and academic.
So what...
That could be what it said.
I can see it.
Or just, I know, or give an example.
But it's kind of like what they're going to learn for the day, what, how they're going to, you know, what we're going to share for the day, what we're going to do for the day, what the expectations are for the day. And it goes through everything that they're expecting. So they kind of know what's coming.
Physical power graph.
Yeah, it is. And if you, if you go into any of the classrooms that are doing this morning meeting, you'll see the morning message in every classroom. So anyone can walk in and see what the class is doing for the day and what the goals are for the day.
Hi, Allison Brush. So I'm going to speak a little bit about the middle school. We heard a lot about what the elementary school is learning. And so when they arrive here at the middle school, we want to sort of be a bridge where we're doing some more developmentally appropriate activities with them to foster this mental health and, you know, their well-being. So a couple of things that we do, one is our leadership programs. Those are for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And we use that program, it's used, leaves a curriculum that Ms. Schmidt and I think one of the social workers who was here years ago had created a curriculum. We focus on relationship skills, team building, working together towards a common cause. So right now, all the students who are in leadership are doing fundraising for various organizations. And part of that is they have to come together, they have to agree on common goals and work together as a team. So it's a really nice experience for the students. Many of you know about the Obaest program, the Bully Reduction Program that we have here. It's probably our biggest school-wide event that happens in October. It's an amazing event for all the kids. They learn a lot about, you know, continuum of what they learned in elementary school. What did it mean to be an upstander? How do we reduce bullying? How do we, you know, it's an anti-violence program. And all the kids really get a lot of that out of it because they're all together in doing it. It touches every student and every faculty member in the middle school. So it's really a wonderful initiative. Our Brave Ambassadors, those are our school-wide upstanders. They are in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. They receive different types of training per grade. Right now, I'm working with Ms. Schmidt with the current sixth-grade Brave Ambassadors. We're working on a program to bring mindfulness to transitioning fifth and sixth-grade students as well as the eighth and ninth-grade students. And the kids are really excited about the opportunity to potentially work with their peers. It's student-led and I know we're really excited to see where it goes. In terms of in-class presentations, all of the counselors go into the classrooms and they do Navions. So for sixth graders, they're talking about learning their learning styles. It's asking the kids to be a bit self-reflective. How do they learn? Are they a visual learner? Do they learn better when they hear things? So it really kind of taps into that ability to self-reflect and to really think about what they need for their needs to be met in terms of their learning style. Seventh and eighth grade, it's a continuum. Right now, the eighth grade, I think, is preparing obviously for their transition to high school. Goal setting, looking ahead, being self-reflective, self-advocacy. So all of those things are kind of brought in. I'm currently in the classrooms right now for sixth grade doing Erin's Law Presentations. That's body awareness, self-awareness, really making sure that the kids know that they can be advocates for self and giving them tools and tips and strategies on where they can go should they have questions or need support. I think one of our most powerful tools here at the middle school is those Nest periods. That's the way we connect the most with our kids. I love it particularly because I get to meet kids that I wouldn't particularly, you know, normally run into on a day-to-day basis, and I get to really spend meaningful time. The goal of that is connections. And I think it's a really nice way that we take a pause as a school, spend some time together, make some really good connections with the kids. I know that people, you know, students recognize me more readily just from my experience in going in. We talk about SEL themes of the month, you know, we tie it all together. It's a really meaningful experience for the students and the faculty too. They get a lot out of it. Our health curriculum, Ms. Cambackus and Mr. Laddie are our health teachers. Their curriculum focuses right now, actually, on stress reduction. So they're working on identifying stress, signs of stress, how to manage stress. And they're actually giving the kids actionable tools. So they use things like visualization, progressive muscle relaxation, guided meditation. They do the breathing that we've done. And then the goal is for the kids to learn it and then learn how to generalize it, right? So it's one thing to know it when they're in the moment. It's another thing to go out and use it when they really need it. So they work on that in the health classes. And then that sad club, that's Ms. Breland's After School Club. They're doing another stress reduction, stress management presentation. That's all student-led, student-researched. The kids were really excited about it. I know they're going to be pushing it to the elementary schools at some point too.
That's obviously not the sad that they had when I went to high school.
No, so this is Students Against Destructive Decisions. So it's, yes, it's a different, yes, I had, it took me some time.
Like it's an evolution of that club, right?
Yes, I think it's progressed and I think it's encompassing more than just the driving, obviously, because destructive decisions can be pretty broad, but yes. And then the Health and Wellness Club in the afternoon, very student-led. They come in and they let Ms. Cambackus or Ms. Zimmerman know what they need to work on, what they'd like to target. And then she works with them. I think she had told me that a bunch of the students on the football team had come in and said they really wanted to do relaxation techniques. And so they worked on it. And she taught them some really awesome skills that they were able to use both academically and then in their extracurricular lives as well. For faculty, we do like to try to give our faculty, obviously, as much support as we possibly can. Superintendent's Conference Day this year led off with a really important, excuse me, presentation on suicide awareness and what is that worn handoff? So kind of equipping our faculty with the tools that they might need should they ever be in a situation where a student discloses that they are at risk. So it was, it was a nice presentation for faculty and they were appreciative of knowing what to do with, right? We have a great partnership with Bozies, I think that was mentioned before. They provide a lot of awesome PD, both for faculty, I know that they also do it for families in the community. But our faculty is able to take advantage of that professional development. And then we also have those in-service class offerings. I know that some of our faculty will teach to others about really important topics, LGBTQ+ needs. I think that's coming up in the spring, so we've got some really great support for the faculty. And that's the middle school. I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Smith.
Hi, everyone. So, you know, without, you know, there are so many different programs that we do in the elementary and the programs that we try to like weave through to the middle school. And then hopefully, when we get to the high school, we're really reintroducing, but on a more developmental level at the high school. So we're working with our high school students. Some of the programs are really geared toward elementary. So when we're really thinking about what is more relatable to high school students. So one of the things that we did this year, which has been really amazing, was with Long Island Crisis Center and Northwell, we've linked with them. We've had students actually co-lead presentations. So while, listen, I like going to the classroom, talking to students about topics and stress reduction. Many times, students, not that they don't want to hear from me, but they hear best from their peers. So when we have that co-led, where a student is coming in with a mental health person that's with them doing those presentations, students are more open and willing to talk about some difficult topics. So that's one of the things this year that I feel really proud about, that we've really partnered with Long Island Crisis Center and Northwell. Throughout the years, probably the past 10 years, we've really increased the mindfulness awareness from K to 12. And we've gone through a tremendous amount of different programs. We've looked at research, specifically at the secondary level. We looked at some empirically-supported data to see what programs make the most sense. And one of the programs we use is called Learning to Breathe. The health teachers as well as the phys ed staff were all trained in it. And we start to bring that into the classrooms as well as, as Dr. Brush was mentioning, even some of the coaches have done that within their, within their coaching sessions. I'd love to hear that the football team is doing it. I wish that all teams would do it. I think that they're really looking forward to learn those skills because we're seeing the research to support the benefits of that. Josie, our J Mac dog. So this is our, our dog that we love. We brought Josie in, I want to say it was about three years ago. And Josie was actually out for about maybe two months because she, she had to be recertified. When the students saw her, just this past Friday, they were like crying. I mean, we had staff, like, why didn't you tell me Josie was coming? So Josie's really such a great addition to our building. We're so grateful for her. You know, with regard to our wellness days, our Nest days, and back-to-school night, we really tried to bring in some activities, again, that are hands-on. So we have, and again, student-led. So for back-to-school night, we will do our stressful activity that some parents get excited about. For the wellness days, actually, J Mac, our J Mac students were amazing, especially when we were virtual. They led, you all led, sessions with students on different type of strategies. So whether it be mindful art sessions or teaching them some guided visualizations, they really came up with the ideas and they went in and they taught them to the students during our wellness days that were virtual. Since we've come back into the building, we've done wellness days this year and it was a little bit different, but the students did go in and they partnered with some of the teachers to do some really fun activities. With regard to Nest days, students have actually led, and at the end of this presentation, you're going to see one of the student-led activities that's going to be taking place, I believe, in two weeks with our next session, where some of our J Mac kids are going to be going in with the teachers and presenting. This year, we did our Long Island Crisis Center Suicide Prevention Walk. And as an outgrowth of our sales on bracelets last year, last year, we sold a whole bunch of mindfulness bracelets where we raised, I think it was a little bit over $1,000 for Long Island Crisis Center. And this year, they invited us to the Long Island Crisis Center Suicide Prevention Walk. Another initiative that started this year, even though we've done newsletters to parents, we kind of started to integrate that into Mr. Cohen's newsletter. And so we've been doing wellness tips. So we put some pieces of information, like Daily Affirmations was one. I believe there's going to be an upcoming one, Dr. Goldstein, myself, and Mr. Velez, that we're going to be looking at healthy communication skills. Within the counseling center, students are, the counselors are working with students in smaller group sessions and having discussions with them regarding goal-setting and even just making connections and having discussions. One of the activities that I'm going to get to talks about what do students do when they're seniors, when they leave the school? What are the supports and services that are available to them for mental health purposes? As mentioned before, professional development with Northwell and in-service classes for teachers and mental health staff have been really wonderful. The Jericho Michael Ambassadors do wellbeing initiatives within the school. And we recently did the 988 number, which we'll show you at the end. Also, the 988 number is the crisis hotline. And we've actually posted it around the schools as well as in the bathrooms just because we want students to be able to know that that's available to them if they ever need support. We also provide a kindness code, you see up there in the corner, You Matter. Actually, a colleague of mine took a picture at one time and sent it to me. It was wonderful to be able to see that those are in the bathroom and that students are being able to see them if they're ever feeling down or maybe overwhelmed. P.S. I Love You Day is also an initiative that they talked about in the elementary school and in the middle school. And this year, we're going to be doing it in the high school. It's a suicide prevention day, which will begin on February 10th. Our yoga classes. I want to say it was probably about five years ago, we started the yoga section here at the high school. And one of the big, or one of the big ideas with regards to the yoga section was really looking at how can we infuse some mindfulness-based practices again. Mrs. Funes has really used a lot of the Learning to Breathe curriculum, which is that empirically-supported curriculum, and really tied it so well into the yoga section. So that's really wonderful. I know some of the other phys ed teachers also do this as well. We have the counseling corner in the lunchroom where the counselors go in and they do some sessions. They did a kindness session with students. Some of the other activities, like we've done discussions and book talks with the PTA. We've done some really cool book talks with the PTA and the SEPTA where we had, we had authors Skype in one time from a boat, which was quite interesting. But we had this discussion about 13 things every parent shouldn't do. And we talked about some strategies and activities from that book. And the last part is discussions with seniors about mental health and resources after school. So that's the one thing that we are trying to really look into, is really making sure that while we have support here in our building and the students, we hope, know that. We try to reinforce that to all students, that they always have a trusted adult that they can come to within our building. But the other pieces that when they do leave, that they know that there are supports and services available to them when they do, unfortunately, leave our Jericho community. So those are some of the things that we do at the high school. There are probably so many more things that we do that we didn't get a chance to discuss, but those are just some of them. Okay? Thank you. So before we go on to this video, we just wanted to have one of the Jericho Michael ambassadors kind of lead us through one more mindful practice, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Hi, so I'd like to lead you guys through a take five. It's a really simple exercise that even I use a lot of the time. So I'd like you guys to start off by finding a comfortable position. You know, put yourself in control, let your feet touch the ground north, let yourself feel rooted. And if you'd like, you can close your eyes or direct your gaze towards the floor. And I'd like you to take your hand and trace your finger along your thumb. As you trace it up towards the top, inhale, take pause, and exhale as you trace down. Then trace up your next finger, inhale, pause, and exhale. Inhale, take pause, and exhale. Inhale, pause, and exhale. Inhale, pause, and exhale. Now, if you'd like, you can open your eyes, let yourself back. And how did you guys say you felt while doing this exercise?
The wise.
Yes. That's one of the main reasons we do this, because this is something that, you know, you can sort of disconnect from everything that's overwhelming your mind, you know, find something to focus on. That's why we use our hands. And it's something that can be done, like you don't need to separate yourself from anyone. You could do it quietly, behind the desk, in your hands, you know, take a minute to yourself to bring yourself back, let yourself get yourself collected. And you don't even need to do it once, you know, sometimes you can do it more than once. And it'll really help you calm yourself down and, you know, disconnect yourself from any overwhelming thoughts and get yourself oriented.
Thank you. The Jericho Michael Miss Ambassadors, really, I will say, if that anything, COVID kind of brought us to a different place with regards to... to a different place with regards to mental health. So during this time, we had so many students that were saying, like, is there a way that we can give more of an outreach and let students know that there is support available there? And as was mentioned in the elementary and middle school, like, think about it, in elementary school, we teach all these skills explicitly. Then in middle school, it's kind of like, okay, they kind of got it, they can do it on their own, they don't need it. And then they get to the high school, and it's like, okay, well, we're focused on academics, which is important, I'm not disputing that. However, students are still struggling emotionally, and they don't sometimes know what to do, how to support themselves. So our big, our big goal for J Mac is teaching is, like, what are the things that you do to support yourself when you're feeling overwhelmed? And who are the people that you can go to? So one of our students who is not here tonight, Eric Zimmerman, put together this video along with our other students that we just want to share with you, just to show how much we're really trying to work as a community to be able to support each other.
Hi, I'm Alexia.
And I'm Caroline, and we are ambassadors for J Mac, Jericho's Mindfulness Club.
We recognize that this is a challenging time, so we want to help support each other as a community.
We invited Jericho staff and students to share the things they do to help themselves when they are overwhelmed.
Remember, we are all in this together. We hope these tips gave you some ideas for how to better take care of yourself during these trying times.
If you or someone you love is in need of support, please reach out to a trusted adult.
In this building, we have our fantastic counselors, Dr. Smith, Dr. Goldstein, and Mr. Velez.
Stay well, and remember that we are all in this together.
Leave today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for our students or our staff? How many J Mac people are there?
So, we have, I want to say, in the 40s to 50s amount of students, it's drastically increased from when we started. Initially, I had 10 students, probably about six years ago. And it's, it's really has increased. Do all 50 or 40 come to each meeting now? But we always have like 15 to 20 that are at each event. They do a lot.
And is anybody able to quantify the effect or impact of Obaest? I know that's probably a middle school question. I can answer that.
Yeah, child might be.
I mean, in terms of, in terms of nationally, there's, there's research for it, the most studied in that bullying program out there. In terms of inside the school, we've always had it here, so I don't know how you have a control group, you know, to say, here's what it looks like without. Versus, and anecdotally, kids report that kickoff day is being one of the highlights of their school year. I know it's a chance for us to plant a flag and say, we're, we are against bullying as a community. And it's something, you know, that's the importance of that day, but it's called back several times. I just met with kids yesterday, actually, to remind them about some of our, our rules about being an upstander and reporting things when I see, when I see problems, so. Does the cynic, does the cynic say that they like the first day because they go outside? Just a couple of periods of class and walk around the track on a nice day? I'm sure, I'm sure that's part of the reason they like it, but I think that there's more to it. Are there other national studies on quantifying the effects of Obaest? Or how does everyone know it's the best program? Like, I know it's the most adopted program out there, I know it replaced some other program like a decade ago or something like that. How does everyone know it's the best program? There are, so part of the program is a, is a survey that goes out every year that talks about, you know, climate pre, pre and post, in the beginning of the year and end of the year. So that's one of the ways that I guess we would quantify it. And the utility for us is also that it shows us different areas of the school. Kids will say, you know, I, I experienced bullying in the staff or the stairwell or in classes. And once we have that data, we can then go to those places and say, okay, we need more adult supervision in that area. Thank you all for being here tonight. We are so appreciative of the, of the work of our PPS staff. Our school psychologists do an unbelievable job to support our students, our staff, our families, and not enough words to appreciate all the good work that you do and appreciate